Could you sit real close?
Yes.
Not far enough.
Yeah.
[laughing]
Exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 you can have it, I sit back here. Okay. Yeah.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
I got it online.
Okay. I was gonna give one to, I was gonna bring it to him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about this last week, so that's, we'll talk about it next week, too.
Yeah. It is the topic of the...
It is the topic.
Yeah. Billy Joe, is that something that we've said now? Okay, very good. Thank you. Can, can, can you see my...
Can I get a copy? Thank you. Please be sure.
I can sit here, yeah, I can sit here, but, no, I sit...
I'll sit wherever.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Subcommittee, the Personnel Subcommittee of the Lowell School Committee. If I could, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Chair Person Martin?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Houghey?
Here.
Free present.
Thank you. So, we have a number of items on our agenda for this evening. Our first topic of conversation is with the Mass Association of School Committees. The individual Glenn Kuchar, the Executive Director, is here with us this evening, as we had mentioned at our previous school committee meeting, to walk the committee through the contract with MASC to help us in conducting our superintendent's search. I know he's passing out a good number of different materials, which is extremely helpful. We thank you for that. And I would say if we... Oh, and we also have, we have the full committee here this evening. We thank you all for joining us. And the mayor actually is unable to join us today, but he has forwarded some ideas that he'd like to be incorporated into our conversation when we reach, when we reach that point. I don't know, Glenn, if you're ready to kind of talk us through the contract first and kind of get started?
Does this work for you? What do you want? A little review?
Um, I, you know, yeah, I think you're better off at the podium at this point. Thank you very much.
Maybe we need to distribute those, too. Yes, one other handout that you should all have, I'm sorry. And there are enough for each of you and for the secretary. Madam Chair, for the record, I'm Glenn Kuchar from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and with me is Dorothy Presser, who is Field Director for District Governance and for the Northeast section of Massachusetts. Thank you for inviting us, and let me tell you what we've provided for you. First of all, this guide is a guide to the superintendent process, and it discusses all the different things you need to think about. There's a draft timetable. There are, in this package, some draft key responsibilities on page nine, and on page 10, some draft selection criteria based on examples of what people have been looking for. Every community is unique, and while some of your criteria will be similar to other districts, you will probably have things that are unique to Lowell. We also have included a copy of the last search brochure that you did, so that you can see how you presented yourselves to the universe of candidates. In situations like this, sometimes districts want to just update something they've already done or create something new. We have the capacity to print these in any, in any way you'd like. We also have the capacity to mail them to about 1,300 people on our recruiting list, and we post this as well on our website. So, anybody in the country who's looking to come to Massachusetts will see this. They'll also see it on the superintendent's website. Their association posts this stuff as well. So, that's just something, a lot of the work for you may have already been done. Also, I have a copy of the proposal which we gave you that describes in detail the nature of some of the services. I gave you a draft calendar, so that as you try to map out the timetable, you can just work on this, on this worksheet. And occasionally, there are situations where, before the end of the process, you run out of candidates, or you don't like the pool that you had, or people get into the process and they get hired elsewhere, and sometimes you have to default to Plan B. This is the Plan B memo. We don't ever like to use it, but there are lots of things that you can do if the search does not prove successful if you continue. And that includes starting over, recruiting an interim superintendent or another interim superintendent, as might be, or whatever works. Just understand that, to answer and anticipate a question, as the search consultant, we don't get paid until you have a signed contract with your next superintendent, whether it's three, four months, or a year and a half from now. So, that's an obligation any search consultant should have to use. There are occasions when, sometimes you have to start over, we're not anticipating that. So, with that, it would suggest the things that need to happen relatively quickly, and what we'd like to have instructions before we leave. By the way, all of these documents will be supplied electronically to, to the Board Secretary and the school committee's office, so that they can be available. None of this is confidential. They're all public documents, there are no...
And they'll all be posted on the, on the website as part of the packet?
Yeah.
For the Personnel Subcommittee?
Yeah, and these are, I mean, sometimes people steal them and sell them to other districts, but that's...
[inaudible]
No, because we created them. Some things that you're gonna need, we need to move quickly to let the universe of candidates know that we're ready to start collecting applications. Just as a side bit of how this works, I'm gonna say that 80 to 90 percent of your applicants are gonna come in in the last five days, no matter when you close. The superintendent candidate pool is a procrastinating lot, so we've had situations where the Friday before we close, we have four or five candidates, and then we have another 25 before the next week is over. That's just the way it is. People are relatively cautious. It is very important for the search committee to figure out what you want to tell the universe of candidates, and important for you to tell us whether you want to use any paid media in addition to all the stuff that's free. Electronic distribution of your material costs nothing. Production of the brochure, really minimal cost, it's all electronic. If you want to mail it, there's postage. If you want to advertise in a newspaper, you might want to put something in the Lowell Sun, because your own community may be among your best recruiters. You might want to put something in Education Week, because it's read by 55,000 people who were looking to be superintendents, and we can place those ads for you. And again, we can post the vacancy on our website. If you want to post an ad, you pay for whatever the newspaper charges us, and we don't, we don't mark that up, we just do it. What we're finding is that a lot of districts are relying almost exclusively on unpaid electronic media.
So, when you, in the contract that we had, that you had forwarded to us before, that we had shared with the whole committee, there was, I believe, an estimated advertising cost of about $3,700?
Well, that's, it'd be $1,800 to use Education Week.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the Lowell Sun would cost, but it might be another $1,000 or less, I don't know. Everything else would be postage, or if you used other media that reaches different constituencies, linguistic constituencies or other constituencies that you might have. You're going to want to plan to involve the community by participating in focus groups, discussions with the community.
Mm-hmm.
We do them live, because the community often wants to be invited to come out and talk. The faculty certainly wants to be invited to participate and talk, but we've also had great additional luck with electronic surveys. In fact, you're gonna get 10 times as many responses electronically, not more, than you will people actually turning up. For any one of a number of reasons, people have not been inclined to want to go to evening meetings. In this, in this era, what we've found is that in virtually every household, the adults in the household are busy during the day, don't necessarily want to go to a meeting. You know, 40 years ago, it would have been different, 30 years ago it would have been different, but now, people come out, but not in, in the huge numbers that they used to. But on the electronic side, we get a lot of really good responses. We will write up summaries of what we get, present it to you. You'll guide us as to where you want those focus groups to take place. As I say, we do them in schools, we do them at different times during the day, we do them where you tell us to, and we can work that out with you. The other very important element is that a lot of people want to help you with your search, whether you like it or not. Sometimes it's the media that loves to know who the candidates are, and oftentimes it's the faculty who are very concerned with who their next leader is going to be. So, the ability to use an executive session is not provided to the school committee. If you want to use an executive session for screening and an initial interview, you have to have a search committee. The school committee can be represented on the search committee, but not a majority of school committee members. So, now, there are two schools of thought about this. There are those who believe the school committee should be represented, and those who believe the school committee should not be represented. I never had this discussion with Dorothy. I don't know. But, you know, people...
So, just so we're clear on kind of the nomenclature, screening committee is, you're using the term, is basically the same as our Blue Ribbon?
Blue Ribbon, yes. The Blue Ribbon Panel...
So, that's the same kind of...
Would legally be known as the Initial Screening Committee.
Okay, okay.
And...
Because one of the conversations I know we had had during our, during our school committee meeting was envisioning that the first kind of look-through the resumes would happen with the consultants, to kind of just basically do the comparison against the qualifications. And that for anyone who met those qualifications, those individuals would all be forwarded to Screening Committee, we can use that word, and then they would take that group to then go through their process.
Any number of ways to do this, but a minority of the school committee could meet with us, but that would be considered an initial review of the applications. And you're entitled to one initial review under the law.
Right.
So, generally, we let the search committee have everything. Now, if you wanted to do that differently, we could work out a different strategy for doing that that would comply with the law. That would require...
Oh, I was getting, sometimes committees might ask MASC to do the initial screening and not pass along all the applications to the Blue Ribbon Committee or the Screening Committee. I think it would be our preference that the Screening Committee see all the applications. We would, could give advice, but it, sometimes they, the committee that knows the community better might see something that we didn't see, and might see a candidate that is worth looking at that we might not have. So, it would, I think it's generally our preference that the Screening Committee see all the applications.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, but, I mean, my only concern is that there are gonna be, there's gonna be a great deal of flexibility, I think, within the job description and the criteria, because I would always rather cast a bigger net, but I would say that, I mean, there are, you know, if you don't have a superintendent license here, I mean, you can feel free to pass along that, that resume, but they're never gonna make it through.
Well, your out-of-state candidates will be license-eligible, but they may not be licensed in Massachusetts. So, yeah, I mean, you want to think about that. Now, the other thing that I would point out is that that's why you should have school committee representation on the search committee. Three of you could serve on the search committee, because that wouldn't be a quorum of the school committee, you wouldn't be violating the open meeting law. But there's another reason that the presence of the school committee is important. People on your Blue Ribbon Panel will often have special interests that they're concerned about, and sometimes, inside the search committee, people attempt to use their influence in more dynamic ways than others. So, I've seen situations where somebody comes into a search committee and says, well, I'm a member of the search committee, I've looked at all the applications, and Candidates Three and Five are not acceptable to me! And suddenly, people in the room say, oh, what do you know that we don't know? And some people get more aggressive about, you know, you interviewed this candidate, that's an insult to every teacher in the system, because this candidate has never been a teacher. All right, well, sometimes that happens. That's why you want presence of the school committee, because when the school committee's present, some of those behaviors don't occur. And the presence of the school committee can make sure that the school committee's interests are always preserved, and it's easier for the school committee to tell non-school committee members that it's a school committee decision, and when it's you talking, it comes with a little more credibility than when, when it's us talking.
Okay, well, so, Jeff, we made it to the, 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 we, we go on, the job posting, have you received the revised job posting from the administration? We have some...
I do not believe we have.
We, we have that, right? From the...
Sorry. From the Subcommittee meeting of two weeks ago, we had made some, some amendments to the posting. I know we had included diversity, and we had included information about cultural competency. Does that exist? I'm, I'm sorry, Billy Joe, you're the, the sole survivor, I'm looking at you. Do you know if that exists, and if it's, if we can get that forwarded to...
I think it was, but...
Okay, yeah, I, it may well have, and we just didn't pick up on it.
And I can just find the formal, if you want to...
Okay.
We can, and when you want us to put that up, initially, we'll put that up on the website immediately. People will know that you're gonna be having a search, that there'll be a certain, did you pick the date that you wanted applications to close?
We hadn't picked any dates.
Okay, so we can get some...
It was really just the job description that we had...
We can, we can put a "take notice, more to come" thing on the website immediately. We are gonna need to have a, sort of a timeline with a closing date.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and the timeline is, is one of the topics for this evening, so I think we can tackle that all, hopefully in a row, with any luck. But, so, we'll get the, we'll get the posting to you, and you can get that, the initial information out, because that's already been approved by the full committee, so that can at least start that.
Did that include a salary range?
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, at some point, before you close for applications, when we start getting the formal stuff out, you're gonna want to tell the applicant pool what you think is there.
What the range is, no, absolutely.
And that may be in the form of a stated range, or in the more general competitive salary and fringe benefits to follow. And I can provide you with also our guide to contracting.
Mm-hmm.
I will tell you that as soon as you select a candidate, and when you do that, you will vote to begin negotiations and to retain such-and-such as of a certain date, subject to the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment.
Okay.
That means if you can't get a mutually agreeable contract, you don't have a job to, you don't have a hire. The first call that candidate is gonna make is to the Superintendents' Association, and they're gonna get a model contract from the Superintendents' Association, which you should never sign. We have a better model contract that protects the rights of the school committee, and I can provide you all with our model contract, and the guide to contracting, which includes the list of everything superintendents have been asking for. They're wonderful people, but they get this long list of things.
Absolutely. So, I think to, for our purposes, at our next school committee meeting, which is...
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We, I think we'd be able to have the conversation and vote on a, on a range, on a salary range. If I could make that in the form of a motion by Ms. Doherty, that at the next school committee meeting, determine the range, the salary range for the superintendent position by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Houghey. All those in favor, say aye. So, that will be presented at our next meeting, and we can have that conversation.
And we can provide you with competitive ranges.
The backup information would be very helpful. I'm sorry, Mr. Dakota?
I mean, couldn't we schedule an emergency meeting next week? Not wait two weeks? Is it a possibility?
It's, I think, fine. I'd put it out to the, just a general question right now.
Because we're all here now.
We could ask the, the Superintendent's Office to poll. I don't know if anyone has an immediate reaction to that. I think that's a great idea, I'd love to cut some time out of this. Okay, let me just...
Dominic, is that good for you?
So, that would be the 27th? I can't do the 27th.
What about the Monday, the 25th?
I could do the 25th.
Is that the Monday?
Yep. And then the mayor would be able to attend as well.
Yeah, I think...
Okay, so if we could...
25th works for me. Anybody else have a problem? No?
At least in general, so, I'd say a motion by Mr. Houghey, seconded by Ms. Doherty, requesting that the administration please poll the committee for, and connect with the mayor's office particularly, to schedule a special meeting on Monday, February 25th, at 6:30, hopefully here in the chamber.
Right, because it has to be posted by tomorrow.
Okay. The whole 24 hours away. So, at that point, we'd be able to get back to you, hopefully with, we'll have a number of questions, I'm sure, tonight, that we'll be able to address at that meeting, and then give you final information by Tuesday of next week. But I think that's a great idea, not to put it off for another, and I thank everyone for accommodating my Wednesday night.
We should be on...
So, salary.
Okay.
Great. Could I ask, before we kind of get into some of this other stuff, could you give us a sense of just kind of the landscape we're, we're launching into right now in terms of a superintendency search? I know that, you know, MASC is involved with searches across the Commonwealth. Is there any kind of, you know, pitfalls or other things we should be aware of as we kind of enter into this process right now?
Well, there are some things that affect the numbers in your pool. The presence of a strong internal candidate will be known, if there is one, and that will, as I say, that may intimidate some candidates. It's no great shame to submit an application, be considered and interviewed by the Lowell School Committee, and to be named a public finalist, and not get the job. But it's no great honor either, and you don't want to be known as the person who didn't get Lowell. So, candidates are reluctant to get into a, a race if they feel that the playing field is not level in that sense. The, the economic package can have a good, say, over the, over the pool. I believe that the community is well-known, and the reputation of the city is, is well-known. It's a tourist attraction, it's a venue for a lot of things, Bay Stateers know it, people outside of the state know it, and I think the community would, would present an attractive opportunity for someone who wanted to be a superintendent. I think, I think you have the right to expect that this would be a destination superintendency, and that this is the place where you would come and not leave. And you have the right to expect that people who are coming would come until retirement, and that retirement would be more than three years away. So, there are a lot of people who want to make one last move for, for, for three good years. The pools are not as big as they used to be, because the job of the superintendent is sort of like being the manager of a Major League Baseball team. When you're winning, you're the most popular person in town. One bad season, and, you know, things can sour, and I'm familiar with, you know, I, I served on a Plan E school committee, so I know that, first of all, it is good to have the mayor on the school committee, because then the superintendent will know that the municipal side is a partner. However, you all run every two years. That means school committee seats can turn over more quickly than if you had four-year staggered terms. So, there might be a concern that, you know, I'm gonna come, and the school committee that hired me won't be the school committee that's employing me as early as two years from now. That's a concern, but not a big one to candidates. They will, very, only in Massachusetts is the mayor of, of the city a member of the school committee. Maybe in a few other places, but it's rare, but it's not unusual in Massachusetts, that the mayor is the chair. And I've always felt that that was a great strength. Also, how many members of your city council are former school committee members? And I'm gonna assume that if it's like Cambridge, they're friends of public education, so that's always good to have as well.
Any other questions in, kind of in general, before we get into the conversation around the, the screening committee? Nope? Yep, Ms. Doherty?
This is, goes back to the brochure that you put together last time. I think it's a wonderful brochure. If we were going to look at updating it, because since 2013, we've had some, I think, very positive trends in our dropout and attendance rates, where we meet or exceed the state. I mean, things that really point to what makes us a unique and vibrant urban school district. How would, how would you handle that? Is that...
That's very easy for us to integrate.
Just give us, yeah, you would just give us the information, and we would update the brochure.
Okay, so, we'd provide you with some talking points or sell points that you could just update on the brochure?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And we don't push the print button until you tell us to.
Okay.
This is not a brochure that we've decided you should have. It's a brochure that we'll design for...
and that retirement would be more than three years away. So there are a lot of people who want to make one last move for, for, for three good years. The pools are not as big as they used to be, because the job of the superintendent is sort of like being the manager of a Major League Baseball team. When you're winning, you're the most popular person in town. One bad season, and, you know, things can sour. And I'm familiar with, you know, I, I served on a Plante school committee, so I know that, first of all, it is good to have the mayor on the school committee, because then the superintendent will know that the municipal side is a partner. However, you all run every two years. That means school committee seats can turn over more quickly than if you had four-year staggered terms. So there might be a concern that, you know, I'm going to come, and the school committee that hired me won't be the school committee that's employing me as early as two years from now. That's a concern, but not a big one to candidates. They will, very, only in Massachusetts is the mayor of, of the city a member of the school committee. Maybe in a few other places, but it's rare, but it's not unusual in Massachusetts, that the mayor is the chair. And I've always felt that that was a great strength. Also, how many members of your city council are former school committee members? And I'm going to assume that if it's like Cambridge, they're friends of public education, so that's always good to have as well.
Any other questions in, kind of in general, before we get into the conversation around the, the screening committee? Nope? Yep, Ms. Doherty?
This is, goes back to the brochure that you put together last time. I think it's a wonderful brochure. If we were going to look at updating it, because since 2013, we've had some, I think, very positive trends in our dropout and attendance rates, where we meet or exceed the state. I mean, things that really point to what makes us a unique and vibrant urban school district. How would, how would you handle that? Is that?
That's very easy for us to integrate.
Just give us, yeah, you would just give us the information, and we would update the brochure.
Okay, so we'd provide you with some talking points or sell points that you could just update on the brochure?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And we don't push the print button until you tell us to.
Okay.
This is not a brochure that we've decided you should have. It's a brochure that we'll design for you, to your specifications, and that we will prepare to your specifications. So if you want something in this, in addition to what you may have been in here before, we will make whatever changes you want. It's your search, and it's your material.
Great, thank you.
And that you can, you can contact, in that case, you can contact Jennifer Handy in our office directly, and communicate it directly.
Mr. Howie?
Yes, if you could touch on one thing that bothered me. I wasn't here for the last time they did a search, but when you eliminate candidates without the whole school committee seeing them all, which ones are eliminated, that tends to give me a problem right there. I think we should see them all, you know? So if you could maybe touch on that issue?
Well, unfortunately, the law does not allow that to happen. The law talks about having the preliminary screening committee, which cannot have a quorum of the school committee on it. And essentially, you need to trust that the school committee members that are on that screening committee are keeping in mind the, the criteria and the qualifications that the full school committee is asking for, and representing the full school committee in their role as part of the screening committee.
Now, the way around that is just to declare that there will be no executive sessions, and that candidates will not be able to apply in confidence. So, and, and actually, that's, Peabody did that. They held a completely public search. They had a search committee, but the search committee met in public, and they didn't get candidates that they would have had, but they did it. So the way, I mean, you might want to have that discussion with your colleagues. If, if the school committee wants to see every application, then they'll need to specify that there should be no executive sessions by the search committee, or the, or, well, the school committee can't handle it, but that, that's the way to do it. Otherwise, the applications are considered confidential personnel documents, until candidates become public candidates, and then it's all public.
Just those individuals?
Individuals who make it to the finalist category, it all becomes public, but not other ones who didn't make it.
But there are candidates who you might want to see, who would not apply.
Right.
If their names were going to be public immediately. And, and the, one of the reasons for that is, as I said, there are people who want to help you with your search, whether you like it or not. The press can, can get the names of the candidates, they can call anybody they want, they can ask any questions they like, and they can dig, and any member of the community can go on the social media and find out that, you know, five years ago, somebody said that you did a bad job with the budget, and obviously you can't count money, and the next thing you know, can't count money if that is through your name. So the, the, the social media element of this means that, I don't know if, if any of you have been educators, any former principals in the room? Well, teacher. Teacher, okay. I'm assuming that you may have been involved in a kid being suspended, may have been involved in saying no to a parent, might have given a grade that maybe somebody wasn't happy with, and they blame you for everything then. So, you know, if, if you, if you're the principal, and you suspended my child from school in the middle of season, ruining that kid's chance to get a scholarship, I'm going to remember your name, and I'm going to Google you once a week for the rest of my life to find out whether you're trying to be a superintendent. And then the social media gets involved, and, and we hear from all kinds of people who want to criticize candidates, sometimes for very good reasons, and sometimes for purely illegitimate reasons. And that's why people are reluctant to put their names out. Social media, you can find out everything any one of us said for decades going back. So.
Ms. Doherty?
Just as a follow-up to that, so in your experience, are most of the searches that you consult on, are they in open session, no executive session, or are they only finalists?
I'd say Peabody is the exception to the rule.
Yeah, Peabody was the exception. Waltham did it once for their interim position. Because, see, for an interim position, you don't have that problem.
Right.
Because a lot of them are retired superintendents, and they don't really care who knows they're applying. But if, if I'm the assistant superintendent in Community X, and they think that I just love it there, and they suddenly find out that now I'm courting Lowell, that's, that's not helpful if I don't get the job, and I have to go back and say, well, you know, I swear I'll never talk to another school committee again as long as I live. So that's the importance of confidentiality.
So my thought would be, again, at, at this meeting on Monday, we should pose the question of how we want to structure the, the, the screening committee, kind of the conversation we're going to have next, but also if the committee wants to give them the, the right to executive session in their process, which would then eliminate whether, we'll talk about whether school committee members will be on it or not, but the question of will we keep those names private until they reach the finalist stage? But I do think it's something we have to take an official vote on. We can do that next week. And I'm sure the clerk is writing down all these things, right? That we're going to have to do next week. Yes, Ms. Nutter?
Just to follow up on something. If the, if the school committee elects to have three, let's say, two or three members on it, on that blue ribbon or whatever we call the screening committee, you can still have the executive sessions with that screening committee?
Yes, yes, yes.
Did you? Sure. Yeah, you have to go to the mic, sorry. It's a long walk, I know.
Would a solution to this be to redact the names of the individuals on the resumes, so that you wouldn't know specifically who the people were, and perhaps even the city where they're coming from, with some kind of a filler saying, you know, a background saying what kind of city they come from, whether it's Gateway, whether it's, you know, that, that kind of thing, a size or any of that, with not redacting that also covering?
Too much. You're going to have a whole work history, you're going to have letters of reference, you're going to have people writing on letterhead.
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, just same as asking.
Redacting, redacting will definitely work once you get to the public stage, and you want to share information from the confidential part of the process, then you can go back and redact if something comes up. But the blind, the blind review, there's a strong argument for it, but we haven't used it much. In fact, I haven't used it at all.
Well, the only other question I have, if you allow, is last time around, there were a number, there were 22 applicants. 10 were given to the Blue Ribbon Committee. Nobody really knew why 12 were eliminated, and what you had said earlier was, you would rather hand that all over to the Blue Ribbon Committee for least consideration. That wasn't what happened last time.
That, that may have been because you asked us to read, to give the search committee a certain number of applicants, and not have the search committee see everything. In the last several years, we've, we've done less and less of that. If you wanted us to do.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
If you wanted us to do some of that pre-screening, we would, but usually the search committees want to see everything, and that's the best proof you have that you're seeing all the applicants, because there are those who would say to you, we had 35 applicants, and we're giving you the nine best, but what you really only had was 19 applicants and 15 phone calls from somebody, and I'm lying to you about how many candidates you got. That's, that.
I think, I mean, based on our conversation tonight, I, the recommendation would be that all candidates would be forwarded to the Blue Rib, to the screening committee. And then, I think we need to place our faith in the screening committee, that they'll be able to go through all these applications and, and go through their own process to, to get us down to the finalists. I agree. I mean, I think the idea of, of asking professionals to put their name out there as looking for another job, when they may or may not, you know, even make it into the mix really, is, is unfair, and I think it would limit us in a, in a very real way. So I, I really do believe that giving the screening committee that executive session privilege is the best way to go. And, and to just have them receive everything, they'll do that initial screening, and then for the committee, everyone who makes it to that final stage goes through a very public process with us.
I'll tell you what we haven't done, but we could explore this. As you are doing right now, you actually have a majority of the school committee in the room, but not at the table. And under the Marlborough decision, other members of the school committee can be present while a subcommittee's here, as long as they don't sit at the table with you, and as long as they only speak if the chair takes public comment, as you're doing tonight. So theoretically, we could ask the Attorney General, if members of the school committee wanted to observe but not participate in an executive session, and not sit at the table and keep some distance. We've never posed that question to the Attorney, we've, we've never posed that question to the Attorney General. I'd be happy to explore that, but it's not, we haven't, the Attorney General has not opined on the executive session element of something like that, to my knowledge.
Ms. Doherty?
I, I just want to go back to something you said in the beginning, to be clear. There is no way that the whole committee can be part of seeing all the candidates, unless we have a completely open search, correct?
That would be correct.
So what you're offering is an option that would enable the entire committee to be aware of all the candidates, with some of them as observers? And we don't know if that would even fly?
To, to observe.
Right.
And absolutely not participate.
Right.
Now, that, that, that might satisfy the people who want to know who all the candidates are, but I'd have to run that by the Attorney General's office. Any one of you is welcome to, to, to do that as well, if you, I would do it on a hypothetical basis. You could do it on a, on an official basis if you wanted to.
I mean, to my mind, it kind of flies in the face of the point of it all. But, any other comments? Mr. Howie?
One more comment. Well, you said a minority of the school committee, like three, three, three of us could be on the search committee. Now, if we looked at how many people are on the search committee, I know we don't want to turn it that the school committee would have a majority, so you only have six people on the search committee, or, let's say, five.
No.
So typically, on the search committee, you want to have sort of a representation of various stakeholder groups, and make sure that no one stakeholder group is sort of dominant, has too many spots. So you would typically have some parents and community members weighed against teachers and administrators and staff members. Search committees generally around 10, 12, 13 people is about, so you don't want to get too big, because then it just gets too hard to sort of manage, nor do you want it, I don't think, I, six would be awfully small, and you wouldn't have that stakeholder representation. Also, you know, to sort of get to a little bit of the point that you've been working around about seeing the resumes, part of the job of the consultant is to keep the search committee on track, and school committee members, if the school committee members are on it, of, the, the school committee has set out a job description and, and qualifications and, and criteria to make sure that the, the search committee is focusing their decisions and, and the questions that they're asking on finding someone who fits the job description and so forth that the school committee has described, and not go off in another direction.
Good, thank you. You might also include, if you have some representatives of the college, you might, representative, you might have representative of the business community, you can have anybody you like on the search committee. I would strongly recommend that, now, I don't know how, well, I know in the other Plante city that I'm familiar with, it's the vice chair of the school committee who appoints committees. I don't know if that's how you work with a search, it's the same way. So I would strongly recommend that you try to build the most collegial group that you Get people who are committed to working together in a very positive way to do the best they can for you, and represent the various interests of your community. We've, we've worked with school, with search committees, I don't know, the smallest is maybe nine, seven?
Yeah, I would say.
And as many as 23, which, those, it's a lot of schedules to reconcile. And you're going to have an April vacation in the middle of that.
Generally, what we try to do as well is, once you, as you're thinking about representation on the search committee, is set the schedule. And when that, when that, that schedule goes out, so no one is put on the search committee, and then you're trying to juggle nine, or 13, or 23 different schedules, you know, that.
Set in stone.
People commit to that schedule before they commit to being on the committee.
If you're going to be on the search committee, you must agree to be at an orientation on this particular date, you must be free on the following nights when we'll be doing interviews, because otherwise, you're going to have somebody who's going to come in and say, well, I'm on the city council, I can't be Monday nights. And then somebody's going to say, I work in Boston, I can't get here until, for now, it'd be, I don't know, seven thirty. Or, I have family commitments, I can't do it on weekends. And then it takes you three weeks to get done with your interviews.
Okay. So what I guess, I, I think we've danced around a lot about the screening committee. What I think might make the most sense is for us to actually try to work together to populate what we want to see as the criteria represented on that. I share the opinion, I would love to be able to keep it smaller. I do believe we were like 23, 24. We may be your extreme from last time. That was an extremely large screening committee. I mean, the, they worked, they worked together, and the process worked, but that's just kind of, as we kind of go through this process, if we can keep that in mind, keeping it to a manageable number, I think, would, would be beneficial for all. I do want to read off, the mayor, as we know, was not able to attend tonight. He did forward to me his list of, of constituencies or individuals that he wants to see on it. I'll read it out now, just so everyone's aware of it. President of the union or his designee, head of the Lowell Plan, two representatives from the general community, chancellor of the university or her designee, President Mabry from Middlesex Community College or his designee, at least three parents representing elementary, middle, and high school, three teachers, preference of having an elementary, middle, and high school teacher, a member of the principal association, the clerks' union, and representatives from the Latino community, African-American community, and the Cambodian community here in the city. So that's the, that was what the mayor had asked us to know.
How many is that?
I'm sorry, yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we're off and running already, absolutely. So.
So that's before, before school committee members may or may not be on.
And then, yeah, we, that, that just, yeah, we haven't even.
Well, we'll make work whatever you decide. But just understand, the larger the search committee, the less.
I absolutely agree.
Ability to control the timetable. But we will certainly do the best we can, and then we'll rely on the ability of the search committee to meet expeditiously, to make recommendations to the school committee, and then for the school committee to take up its part, which of course all starts over again with the school committee interviewing the finalists, doing site visits, inviting the candidates to Lowell, and then making your decision.
Okay. So I think for our first step this evening, because I would like us to be able to, amongst ourselves, be able to decide what we want to recommend to the full committee for Monday night, so it can get approved, and as a big fan of low-hanging fruit, let's start with maybe the easiest ones. I, I think, and I'm just going by the list because it's in front of me, I do think that the president of the union of our, our combined UTL teachers' union should be on the, the committee. Do we make that as a motion? I guess, do we need to make it as a motion? At the end? Okay, okay. So I would, I assume that that would, if, does anyone have any questions or concerns around that? Yes?
Why wouldn't we just go with two UTL members, and they can appoint whoever they want? Hey, I mean, it's up to the union to decide who, who they want, but again, trying to keep this as a workable number, you know, if, if we had two UTL members, they'd choose them.
I don't have a problem with that. Any other recommendations or questions? Okay, so we'll use that now, two UTL members.
I'll pull up the chair, the deliberation begins.
I know you guys don't have this list here, but, so for some of the other ones that I think we might be able to get through quickly, ask. think we might be able to get through quickly, asking for a representative from the University of Massachusetts Lowell, I think that's been very helpful in the past. We've had representatives from the School of Education that have been extremely helpful. I would offer that as a proposed spot. Does anyone have any concerns or questions around that? Again, we'll do the official vote next week, so if people change their mind or want to bring something up, we can do it then. This is just a conversation, the beauty of subcommittee. No concerns around UML?
Same with MCC.
I would also say the same for Middlesex Community College, if there are any concerns around asking President Mabry to give us a representative. Yes, mister?
Just again, do we need them both? I mean, if we have one from the university, do we necessarily need one from Middlesex? And again, I'm just looking at trying to keep this manageable.
Understandable. Ms. Doherty?
I agree with trying to keep the group manageable. I think we do need a representative from both schools, because Middlesex, we have, you know, a close relationship with both the university and the community college, but it's different.
I would agree as well. I mean, I do think that both institutions are very enmeshed in the district and do a lot of work, and I think could be really helpful to the conversation. But I can understand the concern. Anyone else want to comment on the Middlesex? Okay, okay. We then had, I'm not going in any particular order at this point, the recommendation of a member of the principals' association, so one of our active principals, which I do think is an important voice to have in this. Okay. One, two, three, four, so that gets us to five.
The Lowell Plan.
The Lowell Plan.
So that would be the business representative, would be the executive director of the Lowell Plan, or?
Or designate. It could be. I'm sorry, mister Dakota?
I would prefer having that be a maybe, and let's look at the rest of our list first.
So we'll put that in the to-be-considered. No problem. Let me just go through this. So the two representatives from the general community, that was again from Mayor Smeris. I had actually thought, and I'm sure you have all also received some recommendations, kind of people just recommending other people who may be interested in serving on the committee. My thought was, and it's, you know, just the beginnings of a thought, I like the idea of having, even if it was just two general community members on this committee, if we could set it up so that anyone who is interested sent us a letter of interest stating why they wanted to be on the committee. Say we get, you know, 21 people who are interested, then the school committee could just do, you know, each pick our top three, go by the votes, and pick those two people to be on the committee. I think that would be a broad, you know, kind of give us a broad selection of people to choose from. Yes, mister Dakota?
I think my idea might be a little simpler, perhaps, and speedier.
Then by all means.
Why don't we just contact the citywide parent group and let them designate two people?
Well, I think we want parents as a specific constituency. This wouldn't necessarily be that.
If we let them know that, there's a group of people that are already committed to the education of our kids, to make sure that we're going in the right direction with our kid, with our process. So I think that that would be a great source to call on, that they could be designated, because those are people, these are people that are committed to the education in this city.
So, I'm sorry, mister Hough?
Just one quick comment. I like the idea about the three school committee members being on there, so you would be up to a total of eight right now. And we still want to try to keep the number down, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, would we be comfortable if we went forward saying that we do want to reserve three spots for three parents representing elementary, middle, and high school, and that we'd ask the citywide family council to make that selection, that they could choose those three?
What do you think?
Because that would get us three parents who are involved in the citywide family council, or they're PTOs, or, you know, who are already kind of involved and committed. And I do think having that parent voice, I agree, is very, very important. Okay, so any other comments, concerns around that? Okay. So three parents.
Eleven.
So that gets us to 11. I know, we've got to keep the --
Not counting the Lowell Plan and the different groups.
So they're off to the side. So we've got 11 that we've all kind of agreed on. I would go back to the general, to my mind, the general community are people who may not necessarily have children in the system, who may be involved with some of the other groups, may have HR experience in other venues, kind of some new voices that may not have been involved with this process before. I don't know, you know, I put it forward as an option, I don't know if they're, I'd welcome any. Mister Lake?
Just after thought about the parents from citywide parent councils, I just feel that we shouldn't close the door on any other parents who think that they deserve to be served. So I wouldn't just say, you know, you have to come from the citywide parent council in order to serve. So I would rather, I mean, we take their recommendation, but I would like to leave it open for other parents if they think that they want to serve.
Mister Dakota?
But they do have the option of participating in the citywide parent council. I mean, we're not shutting the door on everyone. They can all be members and joining the citywide parent group, and if they're that interested in wanting to be part of it, maybe they can join the citywide parent, it'd be a win-win.
I just feel that by doing that way, you give too much power to the citywide parent council, so you got two or three, how many parents? Two? Two parents?
Three.
Three parents, three voices from one group, citywide parent council.
But they could be from different --
So I would rather leave it to, just my thought, I'd rather have the option of other parents who may not be a member of the citywide parent council, but they want to be on the search. That's my opinion.
So if we did a general, if we reserved two general community slots, then those would be open for anyone in the community to apply for. That would allow us to, again --
There may be none, you know?
Yeah, yeah, but it would get, so that there'd be a process where maybe somebody who hasn't been involved, or, you know?
Right.
Or doesn't have children in the system, but is involved with one of the, you know, other community groups or whatnot, they'd be able to send that letter of intent, and then, as a committee, we'd be able to fill those two spots. And that would, you know, kind of leave that open as another way in for individuals who may not already be affiliated with that specific group. Mister Dakota?
Could we cut that down to one? If we're going to go with the three from the citywide parent council?
How about we do?
Or change that?
Three for the, three from the citywide, one for a community-wide.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to put one community-wide off to the side with the Lowell Plan.
Sure.
In the parking lot.
All right.
I just feel the citywide parent council have too much power. By doing so, you got three voices from one group, anyway.
But they'll be balanced out by a lot of other individuals, too, so.
Yeah.
But if we can revisit that, maybe at another point. Mister Nutter?
I lost count somewhere along the way, but we haven't, could you run, could you --
12th.
Could you run down what we have?
So two UTL members, one rep from the university, one rep from Middlesex Community College, one rep from the principals' associations, three parents representing the three levels, and one community member at lodge.
And three school committee members.
We haven't decided on the school committee members.
Isn't that, isn't that eight?
Yeah, two. I have nine. Clearly, we need some help.
Nine. I count nine.
Okay, there's two, okay.
There you go. Okay.
That's what you get for checking your work.
There we go, okay. We haven't mentioned one from the LSAA and one from the clerks, which would bring us to 11. And then if we added two school committee people, that would be 13, which I think is a real manageable number.
We talked about the Latino community, the African community, or the Cambodian.
But those can all be done with the parents, with the community, with the, I mean, I don't know if you want to, you know, get into, start targeting each and every, with the three parents and the open community, I think that leaves a lot of room to invite as many new voices as possible.
Well, I do think, from my perspective, I do think that we would really benefit from having individuals who have kind of an official capacity in representing these communities. I mean, we've placed such an emphasis on diversity, we've placed such an emphasis on cultural competency. I think that, I think that the committee would really benefit from having a representative from, you know, and these groups exist in the city. So I think bringing them in, you know, asking them to represent those constituencies, I think is really valuable.
So which constituencies?
I mean, I'm looking at the three that we hear, I mean, I would, you know, and again, I'm open to suggestion. I think the CMAA has been very involved in a lot of different community activities, and, you know, really, their reason for existence is representing the Cambodian and Southeast Asian community here in the city. I would like to see them represented, I would put that forth as one recommendation. If there are others, I'm not sure what the best representative would be for the African-American community, and truly, the African community, which is a significant population in our But that might be something that we need to do a little investigation on, to find out what might be the best organization to partner with. And for the Latino community, I am aware of a group that's working with Coalition for a Better Acre, that they've brought together to represent that community, that I believe is active and could perhaps supply us with a member. Perhaps we could reach out to CBA and see if they'd be, if that could be there, you know, if they could find us that representative. You don't know, go right ahead, mister.
I like your idea about the CBA for sure. So the numbers are growing right now, so my concern would be, I don't really care now how many we would have, to me would be making sure we don't have anybody on there that's been on it before. That's what I would want, all new people, just to try to change it up, diversity, everything. I think we should have all new people from the last time we had a search committee. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone is aware of a community group that's serving the African-American community within the city. We might want to, we might want to reach out to the parent, the family council, because they may have a better sense of that.
Just one, maybe we should look into maybe like a Ben O'Power, someone like that. Did he? Okay.
I think.
Yeah, I'm looking for new people, but, yeah, just different names, that's all.
Okay. Well, for our purposes tonight, could we say we're comfortable moving forward with ensuring that we have representatives from those three diverse communities within our, within the city, the CMAA, the CBA, and then we'll work to find one that can effectively represent the African-American community. And again, we get to vote again on all this next week, so. So that brings us to, what's our grand total now, 12?
Oh, no, we passed that. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
I'm not counting the school committee till we have the conversation.
Right, so I'm up to, I count 14. You count 14, Jackie?
There you go. I mean, again, we had 24 last time, so, I mean.
Yes.
Oh, you included the two, those two additional unions?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I hadn't included those yet.
Two UTL, one LSAA, one ULol, one principal, one Middlesex, one clerk, three parents, one general community, one CMAA, one African, one Latino.
So with the additional union representatives, you don't want the, you want to do that in addition to the two UTL members? That wouldn't be, and we've got the, then the principal, so you want to have those other two unions in there as well?
Yeah, they need to be represented just as well as the UTL, and the principal.
I don't know. I'm just concerned about an over, you know, any one constituency being overrepresented.
Andy's checking my work, yeah?
Okay, please, it's always good. I was going to say, my notes are not going to be helpful to anyone.
It looks like we have five members from the staff. We have the principal, a member of the principals', and then we have all our union representatives, all our union, and two from the UTL.
Yeah, but all different constituencies, all different representatives from all our staff. Our staff is evenly represented.
Well, there would be the question then of a central administrator, that's been a member in previous, I mean, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other.
Do we have any of those left?
Valid point.
That person works directly with the superintendent, too. If you drop the UTL to one teacher, and had every union have one representative, the principals have one representative, and central office has one representative, then you're staying with the same five people from the staff, different levels.
My thought on the UTL was that they are our largest union, they represent the most of the staff with the, you know, the teachers, the powers, the cafeteria workers, you know, so I think they should have two representatives.
Okay. I know, fine with that. So what was our grand total, mister Dakota? 14?
We haven't added those yet. I'm still at 14. Maybe, maybe, yeah, 14, 14.
14 doesn't include a business representative, right?
Does not include a business representative or school committee people.
Or school committee. So that.
So then, we should cycle back then to the, well, I guess we should tackle the school committee issue. In the past, we've never had school committee representation on the screening committee. I'm open to opinions and thoughts.
Having been a parent who was involved and never had the opportunity to serve, even though I applied, I would like to be a part of it, I would like to go through the whole process. This is one of the few things that we can do as a school committee, is to elect a superintendent. So I would like to see the school committee have, you know, two to three members that are allowed. I think it's, I think, you know, it's important that we are represented throughout the whole process, so as, you know, we all know, we know as a member of the school committee what's going on.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I like the idea of three, three of us, three members.
So you've --
Okay, that's going to lead us to the next obvious question.
Which three? Because I can't imagine, I mean, I would be interested, I'm assuming everyone would be interested. So in terms of the mechanics of how we actually make this choice?
If we're all interested, we pick names out of a hat. Unless you'd prefer rock, paper, scissors, spock.
I mean, the process that's in place, like, subcommittee assignments, is that the mayor makes the selection. I don't know if we'd be comfortable, you know, allowing him to make that choice. I'd be okay with it, I don't know about anybody else. Mister Hough?
I think, I like drawing our names somehow, then giving everybody the power to pick the three. I think pulling our names out of a hat, that's how I feel would be fair, whoever wants to be in it, because I'd like to be on it. You said you would, Conny would like it. Anybody else? Andy?
Yeah, I mean, of course.
Jackie? Dominic? You want to be on it? No? Okay, so there's five of us, you know, so I think we should, and the mayor would be six, I would think, he's not here, I'm not going to speak for him, but I think drawing our names out of a hat.
Can I ask how this process has worked other places?
I'm only going to say this because I say it to every school committee where I am. I always tell the school committee that the chair of the school committee should chair the search committee. Now, there may be other points of view here, but however the school committee selects its members, you know what's best for Lowell. You could draw the names out of a hat, or, is it the vice chair or the chair who appoints the vice chair or the chair who appoints committees? It's the vice chair. Oh, it's the chair of the school committee? Who appoints the committees? Oh, okay. Okay.
So the mayor makes those.
In cities, often the vice chair of the school committee makes committee appointments. That's, okay. Then you'd have to leave it to the chair?
There are no other mechanisms that you've seen used other places? I mean, I can't imagine, this isn't a huge bone of contention, I mean.
If you wanted as a group to decide among you who you'd like to recommend to the chair of you to be appointed, I guess you could do that, and we could take some coins out and start flipping them and see. It's a tough decision, and.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, I mean, other people must have wrestled with it before, right? Other districts who've.
Well, usually the chair, this more often happens in towns, and usually the chair of the school committee doesn't have a problem deciding which of the school committee members should be selected, because that's why you're the chair. You were elected to lead, although in a plan E city, the mayor is elected separately, I understand that.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems more legitimate. I mean, I understand the charm of picking names out of a hat, but it just feels a little random and kind of weird.
And the way our city has been going for the past 15 years, for me to allow the mayor to pick the three, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. So, just my opinion.
Now I think we see why school committee members have not been on screening committees.
I think we need to change. Something has to change, so I just like the idea of three of us being on there.
Okay, well, it's going to require a vote of the full school committee, so why don't we look at Monday, and we can take the vote then, how we'd like to see that structured?
Ms. Dela has a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just have another question, Ms. Moon. Whereas two final, final numbers that we want to bring for final candidates, last time we had like three, three finalists?
I think it was five that were put forth in the.
Can we bump up that number, say eight, nine?
We can, absolutely. I mean, it's, again, if you've got that many finalists, it's a, it then is a real challenge for the school committee in terms of, because then it's our responsibility both in scheduling the, the actual interviews, which are generally an hour each, and then for those of us who can do the site visits, and, you know, so it's, having more finalist candidates are just more challenging. So I mean, if we were looking at even maybe seven, that might be, like eight or nine, I think we'd be getting into, yes.
I was just going to essentially back up what you're saying, that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done after the finalists are named, and there's the interview, there's site visits to their district, they're coming to your district, there's a lot of responsibility to the school committee to be available then for eight or nine interviews, eight or nine site visits. And honestly, I don't know how the candidate pool would feel about being a finalist with that many there. It, you know, it gets to be sort of like having the whole process open, right, with so many names out there.
So is five kind of the, I mean, that's what we had done last time.
Generally, we, the search committee is given a range rather than a specific number, three to five, so that there's, you know, depending on the pool.
Yeah, there may not be.
There may be not five people that you want to see. There may be more, and you have to figure out how to limit it, but generally, they're given a range.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Dakota?
Could we kind of compromise and say arrange from four to six? Kind of a compromise?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I'd be okay with that, three to six, and then the screening committee will be there, and they'll be, in theory, three representatives from the school committee on that screening committee again.
Something to sit on until we vote on it, right?
I'm sorry?
We're not deciding tonight anyway, right?
Yeah, no, everything gets voted on on Monday night, so.
But I feel the, maybe the higher number we have, better pool of candidates, that's how I feel.
Any other comments, concerns? Okay, well, there's a screening committee then, so we'll bring that forward on Monday. Have all, let the fireworks start then. Our next topic around the superintendent's search is the timeline. On the packet that we all received, the vacancy in a superintendency, on page 16 is the sample, I believe, that the MASCE has provided us with. I don't know if this was actually tied to actual dates or if it was just a sample you Everyone should have a calendar form in front of them to help us. Am I looking at the right one, page 16?
The key dates that you want to think about are your closing dates. Every other, well, closing dates and the time that you want the search committee to get its work to the school committee. So the proposal that we'd set indicates March 29th as the closing date.
That gives us basically like five weeks with an open rec out there.
Now, you could conceivably shorten that to the 22nd, and that would give you, well, actually, the sooner, the soonest we could open the search would be for applications. I mean, we could conceivably open it on Monday, but we don't have the materials, so it might take until, yeah, it might take until the 4th of March to actually start distributing and open the search process, which would then mean you'd have one, two, three, four, a fifth week might take you to.
April 5th. So if we did, I mean, I think a full month is fine, I think four weeks, if we can.
If I may, I've had searches where there are four weeks, and it doesn't diminish the number of candidates received compared to a five or six-week search. Again, they'll all wait till the last week, so, the more time you give them, the more time they have to procrastinate.
I can appreciate that.
I'd go with the 29th.
So if we looked at the, basically the posting, the recruitment starts on March 4th, that's our launch date, and then we determine that the 29th will be our final day for applications. Anyone have any comments, concerns around that? Gives us a full four weeks. Yes, Ms. Doherty?
I'm just wondering why we couldn't launch next week? If we're finalizing the decisions, I mean, is there a reason it has to happen on a Monday, or could we start posting and advertising on the 26th?
We can put something on the website as early as you can get the final stuff ready. We can have an application ready on the website on the 25th.
Which, yeah, so we'll be forwarding you all the, that we already talked about that.
Ideally, we could then get the brochure up sometime during the week.
Right. I just think, because we were all concerned that we were starting late in the process. So the sooner that we can get it out to the public, that we have this opening, I think the better. I mean, that's why we made the suggestion to have a special meeting next week, so we could move these decisions along and get the information out to the world.
Which we are, yeah, so we'll basically be able to get onto your website and onto the sister superintendent's site, I know. The actual, you know, here's the posting as it's been voted on, and then we'd be looking at the, by the 4th, having all the ancillary recruiting materials. The advertising plan in place, the final, the piece, the promotional piece that you'll be providing us with, and, you know, kind of the, again, the ad plan.
Yeah, I would just say to you, it might be helpful to us if you closed on April 2nd, give people an opportunity to get through that last weekend. A number of the potential candidates may be away at a conference the week before, and we may need to Tuesday in order to close. I will tell you this, we can have all the applications in your hands by.
Screening committee.
6:00 PM on April 2nd, because we put everything into an electronic format, and we can send it out to people. And we can also provide to the search committee, we usually do, a tiering memo, which is our recommendations of where we think the strongest candidates are. So that if they want to look at it, that's fine. If they don't want to look at it, then make their own choices and see how close they came. But April 2nd would be, would be a helpful date.
Okay, I think that's fine. Okay, so that would be our close of applications. Okay. Now, prior to that, when we're, when we're talking about some of these other things that need to happen, I'm particularly interested in the focus groups and surveys.
Yes.
You've got that scheduled in February and March.
We'd like, well, February's late, but we'd like to get the focus group scheduled as soon as we can.
Okay.
So we probably want to work with you and the superintendent's office to figure out the best times to do that.
So could I ask, we will have this, this meeting on Monday, I think it would be helpful if you could provide us with what your, what your proposed strategy would be, that based on your experience, we're looking at three different focus groups that you'd recommend at the three different levels. I think the survey idea is something we've already talked about that we're very much in favor of. I think if we could have that packet of information in time to be able to provide it as public, you know, for the public meeting law, so that it could be part of the package of information that goes up for Monday night, the recommendations for focus groups, how many, who you think they, where you think they should be, who you think should be there, and then perhaps a sample survey instrument. We have the technology, so we don't need to, we can do that ourselves, but if we had a sample instrument that then we could kind of work from, then we could make a final recommendation on Monday night, and we could move forward and not have to be held up by anything.
You know, what I can do is, first of all, we can do this, I can get you a proposal for a draft schedule for a focus group meeting.
Beautiful.
I can also get you some samples of some of the surveys that we have done. And we can quickly create a survey, unless, I mean, if you guys have a vehicle for actually surveying your community.
We do. Right? I'm looking at you, Billy Joe. Because I know we've done other surveys around school times, and, yeah.
Well, we can put it up on.
Survey Monkey.
Yeah, Survey Monkey.
Well, we can do that.
Cutting-edge technology.
So you want a focus group sample.
Recommendation.
Ideas for schedule.
Yep.
Then you want a sample survey, which we can get to you.
Beautiful.
What else will you need for Monday?
Those are my two so far, I don't know if those are around, Ms. Doherty?
In terms of the survey, I'm wondering, have you done it to just the general community? Because I would love to hear back from our staff, our faculty, our fam, you know, parents.
Absolutely.
So it's like, it's a general survey that anybody who's interested in sharing their thoughts can go on to our website or however it's structured.
We've done it several different ways. We can create a separate survey link for each constituency, or we can create one survey and everybody responds to it. Sometimes people want to know.
With the, with the first question being identifying the stakeholder group that you're in.
Right, what group you're with, and then you can sort based on that identifier.
Do a general survey and ask people just to categorize what, what your role is in the community.
Right, parent, teacher, community member.
All the results are mixed together, and we'll get aggregate results, and we can give those to you.
But we can do it based on, on their identifier, though, right?
I can disaggregate them as well.
Yeah, okay.
We do both ways.
Can we disaggregate if we do one general survey?
Yep.
Yeah, we should, with survey, we should be able to, yeah. Okay, so those are the two things I think that we're looking for as, for work product on, but again, timing would be, we need, they need to be up 48 hours before the Monday meeting, so it would be like tomorrow.
Well, I can get you that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. It's very hurry up and wait, I know, I'm sorry. Okay, so that was the focus group. So we've nailed down our end date of April 2nd. Then that would, it seems, as we're looking at the screening, the initial screening committee's work and their interviews, that would give them, are we looking at like a three-week period?
Shorter than that.
Shorter than that, so two weeks?
Shorter than.
If, if we gave them everything on April 2nd, which is a.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
They should be ready on Monday.
The 8th?
To, to start selecting.
Start their process. So we would expect that there'd be an orientation that week? As their first session?
There'd be an orientation in March before the close.
Oh, okay, okay. So then we'd be able to start with interviews, we'd anticipate they'd be able to start with interviews on the 8th?
Before they, before they see an application, they will have met, they will have started developing questions based on the criteria, and then they'll meet again to select candidates and maybe finalize their questions. And if they, if they met on that Monday, they can often start interviewing as soon as, is that the same week?
So can I just add a little bit to that? So they would have to meet, they would meet to be oriented, that could happen before the application close, they would, then they would need to meet to choose who they're going to interview. Then need a little bit of time to schedule the interviews with the chosen candidates, but so it'd be later in the week. And we do like to consolidate the interviews as much as possible, so that once you get to the last interview, you can still remember the first interview. So, you know, try to consolidate that over a very relatively short period of time within a week's time.
So could I propose this then? Could we do the orientate, could we combine the orientation and the distribution of the, of the resume materials, so that if we looked at Tuesday, the 2nd, you're going to, that's your deadline, you say you can produce that really quickly, that that evening, we could then have that initial orientation meeting for the, for the screening committee, and then be able to distribute to them at that point all the hard copy resources to begin the process?
We can distribute the, the, the application packages electronically, securely, so that they wouldn't, so that they can have those and have had a chance to look at them before they meet to discuss. Does that make sense?
Well, no, because you're not going to have them till the 2nd.
Right, so they, but, so they would need probably until the 8th to have a chance to look through the resumes and, and be able to discuss them on the 8th.
I think she was talking about the orientations.
Right, I am, that's why. So I'm thinking on the 2nd, everyone will receive their materials, and we'll do the orientation section that night.
Yes, yes.
Then perhaps on the following Tuesday, which would be the 9th, could be when they come up with their, could be when they've had a chance to review everything and make their decisions about who they want to bring in for interviews?
Yes, but that means.
Is that quick enough?
Well, that means that on the 2nd. That means that on the 2nd, when they get oriented, they're going to need also to start figuring out how they're going to be developing questions, because they'll be.
Would that be part of the orientation?
Hmm? Oh, it can be. It can be. In fact, as someone, at MASCE, process is not our most important product. So if we wanted an outcome, we can push the search committee to start thinking about questions, and then get back to us very quickly to finalize the questions, so that we can start scheduling interviews and finalizing the questions as early as the 8th. We could do that, yes.
Okay, I'm just looking for clarity, because I'm a little confused. I thought originally your plan was that once we name a screening committee, and let's hopefully that's done the first week in March, sometime in March, you would have an orientation for those members, correct?
That would be, that would be the easiest way to do it.
I think they're a little confused with, so that would be the first meeting, and then you said we'd have another one after that?
Well, the meeting.
To form questions and.
We could have the applications distributed by the end of business on April 2nd, and then we could meet to begin developing questions as well, because that's an important part of the process. So, yes, we could do that, and then they'll be ready on the following week to start selecting candidates and interviewing.
So then your proposal would be that we should do an orientation session in maybe that third week in March?
Sometime during that week, yes.
And then we'll do another session on the. And then we'll do another session on the, if we did that on the, the 26th, that's the orientation. Then on the 2nd is the distribution of materials and the formulation of questions.
Okay, hang on a second. March 26th.
I can't even imagine, yeah. Well, yeah, I only know the
That would work, okay.
Final is the 15th.
It would have to be here to select.
Miss, I'm sorry, that's right, it would be April, April 9th, well, April 8th. Right, it would be, no, it could be
Tuesday would be the 9th.
I'm sorry.
So if they met on April 2nd to get the hard copy materials and start to formulate questions, then they would need a meeting sometime soon after that, maybe the 8th or the 9th, to select the candidates for the interviews. Then we would need a few days to set up the interviews, and they would be interviewing maybe at the end of the week, the, maybe the 11th, or maybe they would do all the interviews the week of the 15th. That's not school vacation week, is it, the 15th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the week that's vacation week?
Yeah, so then it would, it kind of bounced it to the 22nd.
Sorry, the interview's on the 22nd.
And conceivably, they should be done by May 1st.
One thing about having the interviews later is it gives you plenty of time to schedule them with the finalists, so that you could do, I imagine you could do two interviews in a night, right?
We could do, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And try to stagger that, so that it's a busy week. But for comparison, when you see people right after that, it's so much easier to kind of
Compare.
That's the idea, yeah.
Compare them, you know? Mr. Dakota.
Thank you. I don't know, is it altogether possible to have that initial, um, um, meeting, also begin the questions at that meeting as well?
The orientation meeting?
Yes.
Begin the question?
Yes. Why couldn't we do that? And you're, we're tying up these people's time and everything. Why couldn't we start the question process right there at the orientation?
So that would eliminate one meeting, but it still pushes you into probably the week of the 8th for them to be able to select who they're going to speak with, because they need a chance to go through all the resumes and
Yeah, yeah.
and absorb the information.
And just for consistency's sake, if we'll, if we'll, I agree, we need to try and limit the amount of time that we're impinging on people. But, so if we looked at the 26th's orientation, I mean, there is going to be a great deal of, of conversation that needs to happen in that orientation, I, you know, absolutely.
26th.
Then the, again, consistency. So that Tuesday night, the next Tuesday night, which is April 2nd, would be when you formulate the questions, and I bel, I'm sorry?
I think, I think what we're saying is that they would start to formulate the questions also on the 26th.
26th.
So the meeting could be either the 26th
When I said that 20 minutes ago, and it wasn't possible, now it's possible. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're confusing you.
Okay.
So either the 26th or the 2nd could be the orientation and the formulation of the questions. Makes sense? Yeah.
Which then puts us at the 9th? So you, we'll just be meeting on the 2nd, you'll do your orientation and the questions that same night? Great. And then on the 9th, we'd be looking to make the selections of who the committee would like to interview. And then we still have this barren week because of vacation, so we don't gain anything there. But we'd be able to, with any luck, be able to schedule all of the interviews for the week of the 22nd.
So, again, to clarify for, for me, the orientation committee will come together, the Blue Ribbon Panel will come together on April 2nd? Is that what you're
That's what I just said, and I think what
Okay, and then they will get the applications, and they will be oriented, and they'll start developing questions. So that means there'll be no meeting on the 26th of March.
Right.
Okay. It does mean that anybody who wants to serve on the orientation committee has to agree to be available on April 2nd.
Well, they'd have to agree to be available April 2nd, April 9th, and, and the week of April 22nd to the 26th.
Yes.
Okay.
It's big commitment, obviously.
And actually, by doing it all on Tuesdays, we limit the mayor, the mayor cannot be available on Tuesdays, that's when the city council meets.
I can imagine.
Then he can't be on the committee.
Yeah. All right. Because we have no day on the hill until the following week. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Blake.
Just curious, why there is a 30, a May 31st deadline? There must be a reason.
Just, just for the purpose of a draft, there's no specific reason for that.
So if needed, we could bump it a little bit.
You can, you can bump anything but your closing date, once you set a closing date in time.
So, so if we, if we bump the closing dates from May 31st, say, June 15th or something, then we have extra two weeks to work with?
You could.
I'm just
Oh, the closing date, yeah.
Yeah, the closing date, yeah.
And the closing, the closing time is usually 3:00 PM, which gives us time to get everything copied and, you know, electronically prepared for people to look at. We can have electronic copies of everything and a few hard copies for people who, who might need them.
And this may be an obvious question, but I ask anyway. So for, for parents, if we select parents, what would be, say, if they, they're parents, but they also work for the school department, obviously you may not consider them as parents? Is that how?
Okay.
So how, how would they be if they work for the state? Is that, I mean, how would you, you identify parents so that it's not conflict with
Okay, this is where you have some discretion. You may have faculty members who wish to apply for one of the parent seats. You may have someone who represents one of your minority constituencies who is a faculty member. So there are a number of, any resident of Lowell or anyone in the community may be eligible for one or two or three of the categories that you're trying to fill. And that gives you flexibility as to how you do it. It's really no, there are no real rules for how this works, it's up to you.
But I do think we could, in our charge, and, you know, again, as we talk on Monday, that we'd be going to these different constituency groups that we've identified and saying, these are some of the priorities we've set. You know, we don't want to see, you know, we don't want to see, you know, someone who's representing three different constituencies, you know, kind of a teacher and a, and a parent. They should be one or the other, you know what I mean? And then, to the other point, I think that, um, I just think that the, you know, we've talked about the idea of new voices who haven't been part of the process before. I'd like to make that as a recommendation as we send out this, this, you know, kind of charge to the community as they're selecting people. I don't think it needs to be hard and fast, you know, we won't accept anyone who hasn't been on it before or who has been on it before. But I do think as a recommendation to get new voices, I think that that would be our preference.
You could say that preference will be provided to people who have not previously served on a search committee, or who have served on a search committee, whichever you want it, but you can put that out there.
Ms. Nutter?
I, I would hope that we would hold hard and fast to hiring prior to May 31st. As we all know, there are, you know, some people may need, like contractually, need to give a 60-day notice. So if we hire them in May, they have June and July to give their notice, and they could may not be able to start in this district until August 1st. But we would want them here before the start of the school year. So that's why I, I really do hope that we stick to hiring before that May 31st deadline to protect ourselves and make sure that we have a superintendent in place for the start of the school year.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely agree with that goal, absolutely. So then we'd be, look, the next date we'd need to set would be when the search committee would report out to us. You have that as the second week in May?
Actually, if they're done with their work on the week of the 22nd, they could report out the week of the 29th, whenever, whatever night during that week makes sense.
So we'd basically be looking at them to do interviews maybe Monday through Thursday, and then Friday would be their, their time to discuss, and, and
Usually they discuss after the last, immediately after the last interview.
Okay.
And oftentimes, they'll do two a night, and they might do four on a Saturday.
Okay, okay.
To get it done.
So then they could report out to us the week of the 26th.
Waltham actually did back-to-back Sundays, all day.
And they'd be able to set that schedule for themselves.
Because they were on a tight schedule at the time.
Okay. So then we'd be looking for them to report out, I mean, it might even, because we'd be meeting already on May 1st, we have our regularly scheduled school committee, and it would be great to have that happen in a public session.
It's, it's ambitious, but we can try to get there. And if it's
Truth be told, if we ran into, if we hit a wall, we could then have a special meeting on the 8th.
Okay.
That would allow us to still do a, you know, have a full reporting session, which I think would be important.
If you were able to, if you were able to meet May 1st, then you could be doing site visits in One Direction the week of the 6th, site visits and interviews the week of the 13th.
I mean, I would, and again, we'll have to, it's going to be a huge challenge, I know, logistically. But if there was any way we could look at the week of the 13th, and maybe try to preemptively keep those evenings all free, that we could do all of our interviews that week. We could do them in the mayor's reception when this room isn't available. Both are appropriate for public meetings now. Of course, I say that having not looked at my calendar, so God only knows what's happening that week, but. Yeah, we can use the building, the room over there. We should be able to find a space. I wouldn't let that hold us up. Okay, yes, Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to ask a question about the orientation and questions. Typically, when you create the questions, that's after you've had an opportunity to look at the candidates, or no? Oh, it isn't?
Not, I mean, the, the questions are going to be more based on the criteria and the results of the focus groups and surveys.
I see.
But the search committee will always have the flexibility to tailor follow-up questions and additional questions specific to some of the unique elements of the candidates. In other words, the, the search committee will have a lot of flexibility inside the interview process to adapt their questions as needed. And follow-up questions are rarely scripted.
It shouldn't be. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. Do all of the questions that are being asked of the candidates that are being interviewed, do all of the candidates have to be asked the same question?
You know, that's an urban myth created by the same guy who decided that the bride's father has to pay for the wedding. The answer is no.
Okay.
But you do have to be fair.
Of course.
And what we found is that oftentimes, the different interviews will be very similar, but not precisely the same. And sometimes the questions will be mixed up about who asks them and what the order. But you don't have to ask everybody the same question in the same order. That was just a rule made up by somebody who never got enough attention growing up, or whatever.
I thought it was a legitimate question.
But, you, you know, if you're a social studies teacher, I wouldn't ask one question, how many people signed the Mayflower Compact, to one person, and then ask the next person to name them, you know? That's not fair.
Ms. Doherty was distracting me. Any other questions, concerns at this point? So that's a sample of all of the dates as we want to lay them out. If we could provide that in one piece of paper for the meeting on Monday night, and also include it in the public materials. Again, we can make any changes we want when we talk on Monday, but at least we'll have a starting point to, to go from. Ms. Nutter?
Can we double-check? I don't, I, I was at the meeting at the, at the school where you made a couple of changes or proposed changes to the
Job description.
Job description. I don't ever remember us voting on those.
Thought we had done it at the next meeting, when you were going to accept the job description.
I thought we did it just as a, I thought you gave an update, but I didn't think we voted. But we're going to talk about Sally that night anyway, so.
So if we can have that, a copy of that revised job description, which I think we're planning on anyway, yeah, so we can do an official vote of the whole package, that's fine. Are there any other questions, concerns? Well, I thank you both for joining us. Thank you very much, we're looking forward to working with MASC. And I think we got a lot of good work done on this topic, at least tonight, so I appreciate everyone's
I have
attention. And yet, we still have one more topic to discuss. But you can escape
Okay.
as we move on to our HR Director's search.
Okay.
Any other final comments before we let you loose? If you could, that would be wonderful, Glenn, that would be great. Because just in case anything else comes up, that would be really helpful. Thank you. So I'd accept that as a, as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor say aye. Excellent. Our next topic, hopefully our final topic, is the HR Director's search. Assistant Superintendent, turn up, please, update us.
So I apologize for the late memo that was given to you today. We were working with Leap Network up until the moment I came over here. We have two drafts of job descriptions in the packet. Instead of going and doing an either-or scenario, what I did is I summarized the different changes that were recommended by Leap Network. The, the first one, the first difference was that he did an info about the district. He suggested that as a way of selling the district to potential candidates, so I think that's a, a quick sell. The second one was a compensation change, and this is a lot, it's about perspective. He thought by changing the salary range from 95 to 150, and putting 105 to 125, that it will appeal to a different group of more experienced individuals since, so one, that's one idea. Or you could, if you, what I thought of as we were sitting here is, you could keep the original range of 95 and up the, you know, you could do 95 to 125 to compromise the two, and that allows you, or the selection committee, to have the flexibility to go down as low as 95 and up as high as 125 if you get a, a great candidate. So that's the second consideration. Three, the addition of the position summary, which again, that's just an enhancement, so I think that goes without saying. Four, the title change. The title change, originally Leap Network recommended that we make this another Assistant Superintendent position. And that, again, some would argue that that's too chief-heavy, and others could argue that you're not going to get candidates of the right quality. So what he did was, he researched other districts and found that Worcester and Springfield both have a Chief Human Resource Officer, similar to a CFO, which is above a Director of HR in an org structure, but yet not as high as an Assistant Superintendent. I personally liked that idea, because you're going to increase your pool of candidates that you would attract, yet not restrict yourself to, or financially obligate yourself to someone as much as an Assistant Superintendent would. You could still always change, if you did get good candidates, you could do, you know, offer that as a promotion later in the game. But, so the title change was something that he recommended. And last, he recommended a reporting structure change. He said that he found that the HR director or the position often reported directly to the superintendent. Now, that could be because of the higher level, if it was an assist, you know, again, the Assistant Superintendent of HR. But he recommended that as another option. I listed it like this, so that we could decide individually, and I could modify the job description accordingly. And then, now if we're going to poll for Monday night, if you wanted to, if we do need an official vote on this, you would have the opportunity to do that and think about it, and give it thought. So once the deci, I, I won't even get into once the decisions are made, what I should ask is, do we want to consider this and then vote on it on Monday? Or do you think that we should discuss it now? now, and give me any questions that you might want me to follow up with?
I think, if we, do we have any, I'd open it up, questions? So basically, the key things we're talking about are a, I think the additions of the information about the schools and about the position are great. I think that's exactly what we should be doing. We have a lot to sell in, in this district, so I think it should be a very appealing position for someone in this, in this field. Next would be the topic of the, the title. I don't feel strongly, I don't know if anyone has any strong feelings on the, on the title shift. Ms. Doherty?
I think it's a good idea. I think that we, by casting a wider net, we're going to give ourselves, and I would also, while I've got the mic, say I agree with the range expansion. Stay with the 95, bring us up to 125. As we, as you see candidates who have the experience, you know, have the higher end of the experience, that gives you more flexibility. And the title, obviously, is going to appeal to a wider range of people by being, so I, I think those two recommendations make a lot of sense. I would be in favor of it.
Any other concerns around the salary range, the 95 to 125? Yes, Mr. Nutter?
I, I would concur with Ms. Doherty. I think by opening up both the salary and the title, it does give us the opportunity to draw in many more people who may be interested. And, and you don't necessarily have to be certified as an Assistant Superintendent, so I think that helps us a lot.
Which I am, yeah, a strong believer in too. And then the third topic, I'm sorry, Mr. Dakota, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question. How does this salary structure compare to, say, other businesses that have the number of employees we have?
Well, that's something I could actually research. His, his recommendations were based on comparing us to sister districts such as Worcester, Springfield, and Boston. So, and he also has started passive recruiting, which, when he spoke to a couple of potential candidates, they were already over the $100,000 range, so that, again, doesn't limit us, we don't have to necessarily offer that, we would have that wide range. But what I could do in the meantime is see, you know, are you referring just to public school industries or private industry as well?
Well, private industry as well.
Okay. I could gather, I could do some samples.
Because we probably would be drawing from that as well.
Mm-hmm.
I would think particularly around the nonprofit area.
Right.
Like healthcare and, in general.
I could do that.
Thank you.
But I think it is important to note that we are primarily going to be competing with other school districts, aren't we, do you think? So, he's, he's going with the top end. I would think Worcester, they have 25,000 students compared to our 14,000, so their staff is going to be that much bigger too. And certainly Boston. You know, like cities would be more like Brockton, say, or what do they pay in Haverhill?
In Lawrence.
I'm not sure about Springfield's size.
Haverhill and Lawrence.
Well, they're the second biggest.
Right, and they're not-
Okay. So if we could get some additional information on Monday, that would be great to help us as we, as we make that decision. So the title and the salary range, what was the other?
The reporting structure.
Oh, the reporting structure. I mean, that's been the case previously, so I mean, I, I think that's appropriate for the, the Chief of HR. I don't know if anyone has any concerns around that?
I'm, I would be in favor of that change too.
So, does this mean that we actually can vote tonight, or did you want to-
The subcommittee can vote to recommend it to the full committee, and then the full committee can vote on Monday night.
Okay, so I can modify according to the, you know, it seems like we're all on the same page, I'll modify and bring it on Monday as a modified document?
Exactly, and then you can post it as part of the regular materials too, so you'll have the 48 hours for, for that.
Okay, good.
So I would make that as a motion-
Thank you.
-to extend the range, change the title to-
The reporting structure.
-Chief Human Resources Officer, and change the reporting structure to report directly to the superintendent. And again, those are all positive moves in a candidate market, those are things that are going to make your opportunity more attractive.
Mr. Hoey?
I'm just a little different on this, because I like the title of Assistant Superintendent of HR. I just believe it's, maybe not the most important thing, but it's right at the top with me. I just think it's a, the money change is important to me too. I don't think you're going to attract someone at 95,000 at the low end. I think we have to move that, but I might be all by myself, but I still think it should be Assistant Superintendent of HR. That's all. Thank you.
My only comment would be, if we do go with the Assistant Superintendent, we'd then be locked into using a DESI, you'd need to have somebody who had the Assistant Superintendent licensure. You, with the chief, with the chief position title, we wouldn't be locked into that. We'd have a broader kind of candidate pool. They wouldn't necessarily be coming to us only from an education background. I mean, that's, you know.
And I have to say that the recruitment firm was adamant that, you know, that we would attract more qualified people if we did use the Assistant Superintendent, but then we would lose the wider net. But we can, with the private conversations or, you know, the passive recruiting, say to the candidates that we, it could lead there, we're open to it, we just would have to let the position evolve, because right now, it's a, we have one person in that office, and we have a whole brand-new administration. We don't even know what functions they're going to, you know, they could come in and be a specialist with recruiting, and I could maintain the, you know, staff rosters and the financial end. We don't know how it will evolve, so you still will have that opportunity to change it eventually.
Yeah, and one last comment about that. I just, I look at the history of HR, and I think the last time we had a HR office that was running at 100%, and the staff was very happy and motivated, is when we had an Assistant Superintendent of HR. That's just the way it was, and since then, I don't think we've had too many good things going on in HR. That's why it's important that we do something, all right? So, even if I'm in the minority, that's okay, it's just my opinion. And I think if we try with money, and we're going to see that with the Superintendent search also, it's, it's about money. It always is. To attract the, the very best, it has to be some money involved. Thanks.
Excellent. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, so we'll look forward to getting a great deal done on Monday night.
Exactly. And if, just to wrap up, I just wanted to say that once the decision is made and we do vote on this, we will post, he'll have the posting list by Monday, so ironically, on Monday night, he was going to submit a list of where we're going to post. He'll continue with the passive recruitment. And then the timeframe, one of the key things that I asked was, we have to say, as he was talking about, when are we going to close this? So one thing that they do is they, we can post it, instead of having a deadline, which only limits us or delays us further, we could do post-it until filled, which means we can start interviewing as we go. Unlike a superintendent where you want all your pool and you need the search committee, we could do post-it until filled, interview as we go, and then continue the search. We'll have the flexibility to continue if we don't get candidates that-
That's a good idea. Great.
All right, so I will take that and modify it and bring it on Monday. And that's-
Anything else we need to?
Nope.
So, the motion I made, those three recommendations, we didn't get a second on that, and I'm wondering if you want me to break it out individually?
I'll give you a second.
So, second, Mr. Hoey, all those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, none, there you go.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Hoey. All those in favor say aye. I thank you all very much for your participation tonight. Thank you.